Okay, welcome everyone. Let's call the meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallax.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Onderdunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
We're live streaming this meeting and have posted the links to the livestream to the Village's social media pages. We'll make the recording available on the Village's YouTube channel following the conclusion of tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. The minutes have been circulated and published. They're the minutes for the regular board meeting on July 21st, 2022. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes? And if not, is there a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
There are second.
Second.
Voice vote, all in favor. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting allows those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. I'll request public comment on agenda items when we get to that item on the agenda. All comments should be limited to three minutes and I'll tell you when to stop. Are there any comments on non-agenda items? No, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is report of committees. And the first item is the Committee of the Whole, which we just had. It ended about half an hour ago and we talked about three issues. We talked about residential street lighting in Glencoe. We talked about developing a policy for new sidewalks in areas where we don't have them. And finally, we talked about an ordinance to formalize our Sustainability Task Force. That's the report on the Committee of the Whole. The next committee report is the Finance Committee, Trustee Vrie.
Thank you. We met on Tuesday and reviewed the monthly Village finances. As I've stated, for the first half of this year, it's been a very good year from a revenue perspective for the Village. Property taxes are coming in as expected, but many of the other revenue sources are coming in ahead of what we would have expected, notably sales tax and some of the other sort of activity taxes. So, business is good in Glencoe. And when we look at the other side of ledger, when we look at expenses, things are still okay. We look at inflation as being sort of a pervasive potential problem, but we have not seen much of it yet outside of our capital improvement projects. Where pricing has gotten, gotten, it's been tougher and it's been tougher to source things within those capital improvements. But when we look at the monthly expenses and monthly, monthly revenue, things are good in Glencoe. And then when we look, the, the second part of the meeting was, was the capital improvement projects. We reviewed our, our yearly calendar for those and then we also went over our policies when constructing the budget and what we ought to use for policies going forward.
Thank you. Next report is the Plan Commission, Trustee.
Yes, we met in July. We discussed the proposed final plan of subdivision for Black Creek and Green Road, which is actually on the agenda for today. And we also talked about the comprehensive plan process. We are beginning of starting what will be an 18-month process, talked about our goals for it and some of the preliminary outreach that we're going to do in the years with our plans. And we'll be meeting again next week.
Thank you. The next report is the Golf Advisory Committee, Trustee Hallax.
Golf Advisory Committee met on Monday. Some stats to report. July is 1,000 rounds over budget. So, we've certainly noticed that there's been no downturn in play with the reopening of Sportsman's down the street. I can tell you personally, if you go there in the evening, you're seeing people tee off well, 6:00, 6:30, you've still got foursomes teeing off, which is just amazing. The Junior Summer Camp continues to be very popular and the majority of participants are Glencoe residents. The Illinois Junior Golf Association held a tournament at the course and so it's a great brand awareness for us and we had over 110 participants ranging from 18 to 14. And then the Friends, the Glencoe Golf Club, welcome to new member, Ellis Goodman. Ellis Goodman's probably well-known to a lot of people here. He's a longtime resident and, and philanthropist and we're lucky to have support and experience to the board. He brings a lot of energy just on day one when he joined last week. The Friends account balance is now approximately $676,000, including pledges.
Thank you. The next report is the Sustainability Task Force, Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes, the Sustainability Task Force did meet in the past month and continues to endeavor to make Glencoe the most desirable, sustainable and livable community in the galaxy. And some of the things to point out here from the Sustainability Task Force point of view is, you know, in the past month, we worked with the Green Bay Trail. We are working on a dinner September 30th. All are invited. It will be at the Golf Club, I think, is our plan, to have it at the Golf Club for a night of sustainability and bring some like-minded folks together and those who maybe aren't so aware of sustainability and help them understand what it's all about. So, please pay attention or look for, for that on your calendar, September 30th. We spent some time with District 35, talking about how this, how the task force can help our school districts become more sustainable and we learned all about their, some of the great programs that the schools are running already around sustainability. Very impressive what the school districts are doing. We're also in that vein where we've started using sustain, the, the students on the task force are going to be leading a program where we collect the little bag tags, the little plastic pieces that go on the bags. If you can, if you're interested, please collect those and we can have, I'll volunteer Phil to receive them if anybody wants. We'll put a jar out somewhere in the, in Village Hall where we can put bag tags and those bag tags will then be converted into donations for, I have to look it up, the, the Daniel Cares for Chairs Organization. I believe that organization provides wheelchairs for children, right? So, that's, that's the, 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 that's where some of the fundraising will, will contribute to. And it's a way that we can engage our, our student members of the task force in a, in a meaningful program. They'll be running that with, in conjunction with the school. Finally, I think in a month or two, the task force will be able to report out on some of the sustainability activities of the downtown area. We're working with the Chamber of Commerce to, to try and push more sustainability with our businesses and to catalog more of what they are doing. That's the report from the Sustainability Task Force. See you all at the next meeting sometime, whenever that is. Look it up on the calendar. I think it's next Tuesday. Thank you.
The next report is the Council for Inclusion in Community, Trustee Rubin.
Thank you. The council met at the beginning of the month. We meet the first Wednesday of every month in the evening and we invite everyone to attend. We spent, it was a busy meeting. We spent going over various and sundry members' activities on behalf of the council that had occurred and what we're trying to do going forward with a focus on continuing to increase our activities in terms of outreach, speaker series, and importantly, ideas for working with literally all of the various and sundry other committees, groups, commissions, et cetera, within the village because we obviously see a significant overlap with each of them, if not all of them. And so, we, we won't go into the details, but we spent a great deal of time about those activities and again, furthering the goal of increasing inclusion and welcome, and making this a truly welcoming community to, to one and all. In that regard, I'll also mention the Glencoe Historical Society's upcoming event, the Gala on their exhibit of Blacks in Glencoe. You've probably have all seen information about that. If not, please go to the website. And we're meeting again the first Wednesday of next month, so please come.
Thank you for that report. And last, and this is historic because this is the last time we're going to have a report on Historic Preservation Commission. Since it's getting a new name. Trustee Onderdunk.
Okay. The commission met on the first Tuesday in August. We reviewed our 15-plus recommendations to the Village Board on items that would advance historic preservation in the community. Out of that came a focus of four to five things we think that we really could do almost administratively with the permission of the board. Some of the other items need fine tuning and we'll be coming back at a later date to talk about those items, but this will get us, get us started. Also, we reviewed some demolition applications for 413 Adams and 707 Bluff. And these were interesting for us because the homes were in relatively good condition, but not overwhelmingly important from an architectural or historic standpoint. We did recommend that no action be taken on that. Part of that conversation though helped us understand the economics of why we're having so many tear downs. That's not the subject of tonight's meeting, but it's, housing prices have gone through the roof in the community. Most of you probably know that and it does impact our ability to save some of our historic resources. So, we'll be looking at that a little more in the future. We also, of course, have an agenda item that we'll be getting to in a little bit. I believe the Chairman of the Commission is here and he will be happy to talk to you about that, I think, when it comes up on the agenda. Thank you very much. Our next meeting is September 6th.
That's the reports of our Commissions and Councils, Task Forces. The next item on the agenda is report of officers and the first item there is the Village Manager's Report, so Village Manager Crowley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. The first item under my report is, is an exciting one. We have several swearings in this evening from members of our Public Safety Department. I'm thrilled to see so many folks in the audience today to support these important members of the department. I'm going to ask that the Director, Chief Lewandowski, step to the podium and get us started this evening and we will go through all three of these swearings in.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Mr. President, Members of the Board, it's my pleasure to introduce and welcome a new Public Safety Officer tonight, Francisco Renteria. Back on June 20th, Frank was hired from the Public Safety Commission's first-ever lateral entry examination process for Public Safety Officer. Our goal was to recruit and hire experienced police officers to reduce their turnaround time and get qualified officers on the street faster, which is exactly what happened. Frank came to us well-prepared for this job. He's a certified law enforcement officer with over 10 years' experience with the Manuka and Gurnee Police Departments, where he was certified in specialized skills including field training officer, defensive tactics instructor, crisis intervention officer and evidence technician. His training and experience will accelerate his training progression to become a fully cross-trained P, Public Safety Officer. He went through an abbreviated field training program before being released to solo patrol in mid-July. Prior to starting his law enforcement career, Frank served as a U.S. Marine for four years, followed by seven years in Illinois Army National Guard. Thank you very much for your service, Frank. Thus far, Frank has been an excellent addition to the team and we expect him to be a proactive officer and a fine representative of the department. Frank, congratulations and welcome to Glencoe. I appreciate you for starting a new chapter of your career with us where you will continue to grow as a public safety professional, adding fire and emergency medical services to your extensive skill set. Mr. Crowley will now administer the oath.
If you will please raise your right hand to the floor. I say.
Hi, Francisco Renteria.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the North Glencoe.
And the ordinance of the Village of Black Oak.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position of Public Safety Officer.
The duties of the position of Public Safety Officer.
According to the best of my knowledge.
According to the best of my knowledge.
Next, I'd like to introduce and congratulate and introduce our newest Public Safety Lieutenant, David White. David's accompanied tonight by his wife Stephanie, his mother Jan and his father Tim, who's a retired deployed police officer. Thank you for being here tonight and supporting David as he embarks on his new leadership role with the department. Lieutenant White was promoted just a few days ago on August 15th and he's assigned as a police day shift supervisor. David is also working to complete his paramedic training at Highland Park Hospital in the coming months. Prior to joining us, David served in the U.S. Marine Corps and participated in two combat deployments in Afghanistan before being honorably discharged in 2012. David began his career in Glencoe as a Public Safety Officer on September 29th of 2016. In addition to being a fully cross-trained Public Safety Officer, David serves as a firearms instructor, evidence technician and emergency medical technician. As lieutenant, he's taken over responsibility for our Support Services Section, managing our community service officers, crossing guard program, emergency radio communications and dispatch services. Over the course of his career, he has earned the respect of his fellow officers as well as his supervisors. I'm confident that he will transition to his new role and become a valuable member on the command staff very quickly. Congratulations, David. I look forward to working with you as you take the next step towards what will certainly be a very bright future here in Glencoe. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication in preparation for this promotion. I'll now ask Mr. Crowley to administer the oath. And finally, I'm very happy to introduce Deputy Chief Andrew Pearlie to celebrate an exciting milestone in his career. Deputy Chief Pearlie is accompanied tonight by his wife, Emma. Thanks, Emma, for joining us here tonight to support Andy. I know he appreciates you being here as he takes this next step in his career. Andy was promoted to Deputy Chief this past Monday, August 15th. Andy began his career in Glencoe as a Public Safety Officer on September 21st, 2008. Prior to being hired, he earned his bachelor's degree in law enforcement and justice administration from Western Illinois University. As a Public Safety Officer, Andy serves as a detective, field training officer, evidence technician and property control officer before being promoted to Lieutenant on August 5th of 2019. As Lieutenant, Andy managed our Support Services Section, including our community service officers, crossing guard program, emergency radio communications and dispatch services. He was instrumental in overhauling our outdated public, our parking management system a few years ago, which automated all of the parking management functions, saving staff time, increasing compliance and enhancing customer satisfaction. He's an expert with technology and he makes himself available as a resource to all of his coworkers, including me or just me just about every day. His leadership skills and experience have prepared him well for this opportunity to lead and mentor the next generation of Public Safety Officers. In the last few days, he's already taken on new responsibilities and proven to be a great asset as a member of the command staff. Congratulations, Andy, and thank you for all you do for the department and the community. I will now ask Mr. Crowley to administer your oath.
Before you go, could I, could I just say, Trustee Mulvaney, when he talks about the Sustainability Task Force, he always talks about how he wants to make the village the best in the universe. We're trying, I don't know that we've succeeded, but one place where we have succeeded is I think we have the best Public Safety Department anywhere and it's because of officers like the three that we are, you know, one who signed up, but two who've been promoted and the rest of you weren't here. We are really grateful. I grew up here in Glencoe. The Public Safety Officer is your friend. We're all so safe, so thank you for everything you do. We are very, very grateful.
And before everybody runs out of the room, because I don't, I don't get to talk to, to the group very much, I would just add to those words from the Village President, which I think are spot on, that I am grateful every day for the commitment of this department in keeping this community safe and working hard in its service. This is not easy work and I want you all to know that you're appreciated not just by me, not just by the Chief, by the President and the Board of Trustees as well. And we appreciate all that you do. I, I was privileged, I, I don't often get to be part of the process for a promotion in our department, but I was privileged to be a part of the Deputy Chief interview process this time around. And we had six very strong candidates and Andy is, is going to do an amazing job as Deputy Chief for this, for this department and this community. But man, I got to tell you, we've got some really great people in leadership roles in this department as well that are going to support Andy and the Chief and me and ultimately our whole, our whole town. And I just am grateful for that and looking forward to a really bright future with this department. Thank you all for what you do every day. And you can stay if you want, but.
We feel really safe.
It's totally fair for you to run. So, I'm going to skip around on my report a little bit. Oh, you're still in here. Do you, do you mind jumping in?
Sure.
So, while we're talking public safety, a new school year is just about to kick off here in Glencoe next Thursday, August 25th. I'm pleased to report and not, it shouldn't come as a surprise to anyone that our Public Safety Department, as always, has been working closely with our community partners at District 35, preparing for students to return to school. I've asked the Chief to provide just a brief summary of those efforts tonight and be able to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Due to recent events locally and across the country, we've been very focused on school safety in recent weeks. Building on our partnership with District 35, we continue to meet regularly and collaborate on proactive plans to support safety initiatives in the schools. We've also partnered with the Park District, the Library and Family Service in Glencoe in a similar fashion. Public Safety continues to work closely with District 35 to enhance the safety and security of school facilities and grounds. In July, Lieutenant Pesosa provided active threat training to District 35, Family Service at Glencoe, Park District and Library staff. We'll continue providing training and drills with District 35 throughout the school year. Public Safety is conducted and will continue to conduct active shooter trainings for all of our officers in school buildings. We're looking to expand those activities to Park District buildings and the library as well as houses of worship in Glencoe. Public Safety will continue to be a visible presence in and around schools every day. Officers may walk through the building, monitor safety drills, can tuck patrols outside or assist the crossing guards or car line to assure everyone is following safety practices. In partnership with District 35, we will continuously review and safety protocols and share information to ensure the safety and security of the schools and the greater community. Public Safety is joining our Glencoe partners, entities to promote the See Something, Say Something campaign. Traffic safety is also a key to keeping everyone safe. Motorists should obey school zone speed limits, follow school drop-off procedures, let children know you see them when they're crossing the street by making eye contact, never pass a school bus, whether it's loading or unloading children, and stop far enough away from school buses to allow students to safely enter and exit the bus. Students are reminded to stay alert while walking or biking to school. Look for vehicles prior to crossing the street and stay off digital devices to be fully aware of your surroundings. And lastly, always wear a helmet while riding your bike or other real device. That is my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And this week, a joint letter was issued by Dr. Katherine Wang, Superintendent of District 35 and the Chief, outlining the efforts that we have undertaken and continue to undertake. We recorded a video today that'll be distributed starting next week, underscoring many of the things that the Chief mentioned tonight. And I just would add that it is our commitment and has been our commitment that our Department of Public Safety will be a partner to District 35, to the Park District, to the Library and to others as we navigate a difficult environment. And I'm grateful to the Chief for his commitment to that and I just wanted to underscore that tonight with our board.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. After a pretty slow start this summer, thanks to some issues outside of our control, August has seen an immense amount of work underway in town in service to our community investment program. That's especially been true with our roadway resurfacing projects. I've asked Dave Mao to just give us an update on where we've been and where we're going over the next few weeks as we continue to work to complete our projects. Dave?
Yep, certainly. Since, since we last met in July, a few days later, the, the strike that the Village Manager referenced of the operator, operating engineers that, that managed all the, the aggregate producing quarries in the state was settled on the 25th of July. Since that time, our, our street improvement contract and our sidewalk replacement contract have been in full swing. If you recall, when we talked in July, the, the street, street work had been broken into two phases. We were anticipating delay, a delayed start to the work around South School for right after the dismissal of school in June. Well, that didn't happen with the strike, so we, the contractor has responded well with an aggressive schedule and we, tomorrow, we will finish the first lift of asphalt on the remaining second phase of streets. And then there's preparatory work and that's all around South School and then there's some preparatory work for a few days to get manholes adjusted, et cetera. And the plan is, weather permitting, that the final service will be laid on all those streets next Wednesday, the day prior to the first day of school. And so, we're hoping the weather works in our favor, but things have rebounded fairly well. The contractor's been very responsive to, to that desire to have that done. So, we'll, we'll work with District 35 staff as we have been to, to relocate some of the staff, the early part of next week to get this work done and they're, they're ready and able and willing to do that in preparation. So, that's street improvement. The sidewalk contract started this week and, and with tomorrow's work should, should finish, complete all the work in the 2022 contract, including, if you're out and about this weekend, the first, the north link of our Hazel Crossing Improvement, which will start probably in September. The north link is the connection of this new trail into the Park District's trail in Cock Park. That will be poured tomorrow and, and you'll begin to see how that, how the improvement at Hazel is going to connect to the, the linear park path work between, between Cock Park and Maple Hill. And then lastly, our Storm Sewer Improvement Project has been delayed a couple of weeks with more scheduling issues than material issues. We expect that work to begin next week on the residential neighborhood location at Sunset. We expect that work to begin next week on the residential neighborhood location at Sunset and Vernon, and then we're poised and ready to, to continue right into the work that'll include work across the Skokie Country Club after, after Labor Day, the week after Labor Day. That's our update. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. And thanks to you and James Teague, our village engineer, who have been really moving to get our street work done as much as possible before the start of school, and to make sure that we're out of the way as parents are dropping off kids for the first day of school next Thursday. So, thank you. I just wanted to make mention, and trustee Vry mentioned it briefly in his report, that the, the calendar year 2023 budget process is underway. Staff is working to begin developing components of that, of that budget, which is for the fiscal year, which begins January 1st. We're going to begin public discussions later this fall with the Finance Committee, and we'll be reviewing CIP, financial forecasts, property tax levy, draft department budgets. Look for a full draft of the budget to be presented to the board in November, and then consideration of approval of both that and the property tax levy in December. So we're looking forward to that. Last, Labor Day is coming up, Monday, September 5th. That means Village Hall will be closed, and Monday and Tuesday garbage and recycling collections that week will move and shift Tuesday and Wednesday, but there are no changes to landscape waste collections on Wednesday, and no changes to the second half of the week. Last thing I'll just make mention of, our, our farmer's market is taking place on Thursdays from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Village Court, just outside of the Village Hall. We are, I, I, I was out there today, talking to some of the vendors. We have three vendors close early because they sold out of all of their stock, and that's really great. It's, it's been a bit of a slow start this year, but we're starting to see crowds return. And next week, as kind of a back-to-school treat, the Rainbow Cone Truck will return. And so, the Rainbow Cone Truck will be there for the whole time, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. next Thursday at the farmer's market. Farmer's Market runs through September 30th this year, so if you haven't been out there, I encourage you to stop by, take a look. It is farm season right now, so there are lots of great things to fill out your weekly grocery list. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Quick question, you know, I, I meant to bring it up earlier. We've talked a lot about sidewalks and safe passage, et cetera. It has made me think of the snow, sidewalk, snow plowing pilot that we did last year, and I just want to question or, or have opposed the idea that we refresh our memory on what we approved, and, you know, I know there was a lot of controversy last time and questions about that program. I don't know if we've done any thinking about it yet, but maybe sometime soon before it actually snows.
Sure, we can, and we can provide a, a more detailed report next month, if you'd like, relative to that program. If you, if you remember, the board did authorize the purchase of quite a bit new, of new equipment. That new equipment was put into service last year, and we returned to plowing all residential sidewalks. The prior year, we had gone through a piloting program, and to trustee Mulvaney's point, there was quite a bit of controversy related to that, a lot of public discussion concerns and questions that were answered. I do think the new equipment has, was a significant improvement over what we had had in prior years. And as we get ready for the snow season, I'm sad to say, that's not that far off, I think maybe it'd be a great thing for us, we'll have the Public Works Department just kind of walk the board through what, how our snow program works, and special focus on the, on the sidewalk program.
And I, I think I'm remembering correctly that the equipment we use to plow the sidewalks also has another purpose. We can use it...
It's, that's correct. We, we purchased Bobcats this time to, that are, that are flexible for other purposes, and we, we are able to use those in a variety of other operational areas in the department.
Thank you.
Phil, is there anything else in the village manager's report? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the village president's report. I have a couple of things. One, at our last meeting in July, the Highland Park tragedy was fresh, and I asked, and then the board asked, that we schedule a special committee of the whole meeting to talk about guns and the village's response to guns. This has been published, but I want to reiterate that we have scheduled a committee of the whole meeting for September 14th at 6:00 p.m. to be held here in the council chambers. One of the principal purposes is to hear from residents in the village, what they think we should do and what their concerns are. In addition, I've asked the village attorney to spell out what we can do, because regrettably, as a non-home rule of village, and in light of the legislature statutes on the subject, we're pretty limited in what we can do. And I've also asked the director of public safety to talk about what we are doing now. So, you know, Glencoe's, we're too small to solve this problem, and I regret, we don't have the power to solve the problem, but we're going to talk about what the residents want us to do and what we can do on September 14th. We're all going to be here, and I, I encourage residents, if they have concerns, one way or the other, they should come tell us. The second thing I want to mention is that yesterday, yesterday, excuse me, on, on, you know, it was yesterday, I attended a confab arranged by our congressman Brad Schneider. He invited all the mayors and village presidents in the district to come, and he was soliciting our views on what we cared about. The, um, the villages and towns and cities in the district are disparate, and so there were some disparate concerns, but the principal concerns that were shared by almost everyone are, first, we need infrastructure help from the federal government, and, you know, we hope to get as much as we can for Glencoe, and so do the other communities. And the other thing we asked about was help with guns, and, you know, Representative Schneider was, you know, he was sympathetic, but I didn't come away with a check. Okay, that takes care of the president's agenda. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that have been published online for everyone to read. They've been reviewed by the village board members already, and they're issued, they're items that we don't think require further discussion, so we would vote for them as a group. So unless anyone disagrees, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Is there a second? And I think we probably need a roll call for this.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yes.
Trustee Underdon?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Vry?
Yes.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is regular business, and the first item on the agenda of regular business is consideration of an ordinance granting approval of a final plat of subdivision and variations from the Village of Glencoe subdivision code for the property located at 538 Green Bay Road at long last. Public Works Director, Mr. Mau.
Yes, good evening again. Before you tonight is the final plat of subdivision for the property at 538 Green Bay Road, as noted. The preliminary plat and associated variations were approved by this board in May. There's been no significant changes to the proposal that you saw with the preliminary plat, and the, and since, since that time, the applicant has secured the requisite utility access both across Park District property to the east and private properties to the north. At, at their July meeting, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the final plat, plat and variations, and we'll talk about that momentarily, including a recommendation of a reduced front yard setback from what was shown on the preliminary plat, a reduction from 30 feet to 22.8 feet. The plat review process, just briefly, as you, as you recall, is a two-step process. Preliminary and final plat go before both the Plan Commission and the village board, and that's what brings us to tonight. Just, just by way of review, this is the, this, this is the existing condition. The, the area in red is the property of 538 Green Bay, and that, that area outlined with the green line is Park District property, both south of and east of the property of And this area falls within the RD zoning district, or, or, excuse me, sits, in the RC district, sits directly behind RD, which interestingly is both north and east of this particular parcel. This is zone, single-family RC. And this is the, the same, the same plat that you saw in preliminary state in May. The prop, the subdivision is in, of the property is, 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 again, is outlined, the 538 parcel is outlined in green, the easement across the Park District property is in yellow, and then there's a 6,400 square foot parcel on the north, outlined in red, that is being sold, has been sold, a, a transaction between the owners of 538 and the property to the north at 550. So the variations that were required of the subdivision were three, and they were, because of its unique status, because, because the, there were requirements to, to meet the zoning code, there were three variations required. If this, if this same parcel sat directly on Green Bay Road, none of those variations would have been required. Those are no different. The lot frontage, lot area, and average lot width were the same, that were part, part of the preliminary approval. And as noted, the applicant was, was, was requested to, to confirm all the utility access before a final plat was brought back, and that has been accomplished. They've acquired a utility access through the existing Park District easement to the east of the property, and then, and then the neighboring private properties to the north for the sanitary sewer service to the, to the subdivision. So the front setback, because, because there's no front setback, there's no front lot line to this unique property, the village board determines the appropriate front setback as part of the subdivision process. It's not a variation, it's, it's the boards, within the board's purview to establish that. The preliminary plat showed a 30-foot setback, which is the minimum for the RC district. A minimum setback of less than 30 feet may be preferable, given the fact that this lot sits 80 feet back from, from Green Bay Road. And just to, by way of review, the builder may build further from the street than the minimum setback, but not closer. The, the neighbor to the north at 550 has, had made a request that the Plan Commission first heard, that that setback be reduced from 30 feet to 22 feet. The, the existing house on the 538 property, as you'll see on this exhibit, is 22 feet, 22.8 feet back from the lot line. Again, it's, it's interesting here, because the, again, this lot sits 80 feet back, that's 80 feet of Park District property, and the setback of the lot from the Park property is, is, currently is 22.8 feet. So ultimately, the Plan Commission adopted, as a condition of their approval, a recommendation of the 22, of the reduction from 30 feet to 22.8 feet. So along with the packet tonight for recommendation, for consideration of the final plat, is the requisite subdivision and development agreement. The village attorney, Stu Weiss, is present tonight to be able to answer any questions that the board might have on the, that agreement, that subdivision and development agreement. That with that, as presented to the Plan Commission, staff is of the opinion that the final plat and associated variations meet the standards for review for a new subdivision, and the proposed final plat is keeping with the approved preliminary plat that the board saw back in May, and includes a recommended and required changes for utility access. Staff is also of the opinion that a front setback of 22.8 feet, as recommended by the Plan Commission, may also be appropriate. I would note that the, the Park District, both at, both at the Plan Commission level and in the packet forwarded to the village board this week, have expressed their, their recommendation that that setback remain at 30 feet. So with that, I would, I would entertain questions, with ultimately a, a, a vote before the board tonight.
Let me just say, to quote Yogi Berra, this seems like deja vu all over again, because we've talked about this many times, and it's, it, it seems like we've gotten to a reasonable accommodation of everybody. Anybody have any questions about this? Yeah, I regret that there's this modest disagreement between the Park District and the Plan Commission, but in, in this case where the disagreement is, the 22.8 feet is sort of like grandfathering, which we typically do, and it's certainly going to be invisible from the street. You know, I, and, you know, I obviously take the Park District's position seriously, but here, just sort of balancing it, I'm ready to get this over with. Anybody have any questions, concerns, or we, should we, is there a motion to approve what the Plan Commission approved, and get this over with?
Some moved.
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Yes.
Trustee Underdon?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Vry?
Yes.
Thank you for presentation. The motion carried, and for Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Cummings, I congratulate the both of you. I'm sure nobody is completely happy, but, you know, that's the, that makes a good deal. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance amending Village Code, Chapter 26A, concerning what used to be called the Historic Preservation Commission. And I'll ask the chair of the Historic Preservation, Peter Van Vecten, and our assistant village manager, John Pape, to present. Peter, welcome. Thank you for your service, and again, I'm, you know, here we are at this historic time when it's not going to be historic anymore.
Thank you and good evening. It is great to be here in person again. What we have before you this evening is the first of a series of recommendations that we'd like to propose, and this first round are the ones that we considered of being the low-hanging fruit. So changing the name of the commission, for example, doesn't seem to us to be controversial. And so we, we bring the first six with the intention of coming back in the future with additional recommendations. You might recall, we've discussed this at least a couple of times before, and so what, what I discovered in this process, it takes us a little while to talk through some of these things, and there's some unforeseen things that pop up in the discussions, and it's not quite as straightforward as one may hope. So, I don't really feel like I need to go through these, I'm sure you've read them, but what I'd like to offer is if you have any questions or comments on any of these six items, I'd be happy to address them.
Like I said, you brought these to us earlier, we talked about them earlier, and I agree with you that, that, you know, some are more or less complex, but these are the low-hanging fruit. So I'm good. Anybody else have questions?
What number, what were the changes to demolition permit application?
Which num, number two? Oh, that's actually more like fixing a typo in the permit forms, I believe. Am I correct on that? Am I correct on that?
There's two changes, one of which is to correct the typo, which refers to what the commission used to call honorary landmarks, which was designated landmarks. And the second is to update the photo requirements, which are quite old and require black and white photos. So it's just updating the requirements to ask for, we, you know, the commission specified some resolution, but what we're looking for is quality color photos to be submitted.
Yeah. Sorry, I had a mental pause when you asked that.
Item number three, consider an annual workshop. I hope it don't take a year to consider it, right? So the sooner we start that, I think the better. That would be my only comment on the six.
Thank you for that, because we would like to get that underway, because I think there's a shared concern that whenever you have a demolition, that's fundamentally a sustainable issue. It also goes straight to inclusion. So I think there's a lot to talk about. And so what we wanted to do is to put it on the radar of you all, so that you understand when we reach out, what's, why.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the revised ordinance?
Motion to approve the revised ordinance.
There a second?
Second.
So a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdonk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, and we understand you'll be back.
Thank you all very much. One last thing, if I could, for 30 more seconds. One of our next agenda items is to return to an idea that we had back in 2019, and that was to send a letter to each of the homeowners that have current landmarks, kind of letting them know in case they're not aware, but then also letting know the owners of historically significant properties, that the commission considers those of great value to the village, and they are also included on the village's website on the story map. So when we started this effort in 2019, little did we know the pandemic was coming. So priorities shifted in the world dramatically. We set that to the side, but we are going to return back to that now. Okay?
And we'll see what happens.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, probably everybody in this town got a letter from the assessor that shook them up. So this will probably be less threatening than that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is referral of a proposed zoning code amendment regarding front entryways in required front setbacks. And I'll ask Planner Rich McGowan to present, and, you know, be sure to tell us about what happened at the last zoning board meeting.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rich McGowan. I'm a planner here with the village. For this agenda item, we are going to briefly discuss a proposed zoning code amendment to Section 3-111G21. Specifically, this is for covered entryways. As President Rowan had mentioned, for a little bit of background, at the August 1st Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, an applicant appealed staff's determination that uncovered front entryways are not eligible for a front setback exclusion. So just to clarify, this exclusion is currently only available to covered front entryways. So ultimately, the ZBA recommended to the Village Board to consider a proposed amendment to allow a setback exclusion to uncovered front entryways. And so if we take a step back real quick, when we're talking about uncovered front entryways, that could be a stoop or a step. There is another section in the zoning code, Section 3-111G5, which allows for stoops and steps to encroach into their required setbacks, so long as they meet certain conditions and criteria. And so jumping into the section that we're looking to make an amendment for, again, that's Section 3-111G21, special front yard setbacks for certain covered entryways. This is another section in the zoning code that outlines criteria and conditions that covered entryways must meet in order to be excluded from front yard setback requirements. So what staff is proposing is simply to remove the word "covered" from this section. Diving in, again, to the zoning code, there are exclusions for stoops and steps. This is simply just removing the word "covered," which would allow for entryways, regardless if they're covered or uncovered, to be eligible for a front yard setback exclusion, so long as they can meet the conditions outlined in this section. And so with that, moving forward, the Village Board may deny the proposed amendment presented here tonight, or you may refer it to the zoning commission for a public hearing and ultimately a recommendation. After that recommendation, it could come back to you all for a final decision. And with that, I will turn it over to President Rowan and trustees with any questions.
Rich, just to make sure I understand what happened, someone came to the zoning board with a request, and as I understand it, the zoning board said, "We would like to approve this. It looks fine to us." But it turns out they couldn't, because "covered" is required, and the request was for something uncovered. And then they sort of looked at each other, and they asked, and said, "What's the reason for 'covered,'?" And no one had an answer. And we're still waiting for an answer, which doesn't mean there isn't one, but we're still waiting.
Only speculation.
And so the zoning board said, "This seems wrong. Can we fix this?" And so that's what's being sent to us. Like I said, we're still, I'm still, you know, maybe there's a reason for "covered," and maybe we'll hear about it, and we're certainly going to look. But in the meantime, it seems like we should do exactly what the zoning board asked, approve this change, send it back to them for a hearing, and let's smoke out whether there's any reason to have this limitation. My guess is there isn't, and that we could improve everyone's lives, including the applicant, by fixing our zoning code.
Is it necessary to go back for a hearing? I read that as one or the other.
It is necessary.
Oh, that's a deny. It is necessary.
It's necessary, it's necessary, whenever we change our zoning ordinance, we have to have a hearing about it. And I, you know, and I think, it's all slow, but I think that's really best practice. And maybe, I don't know when "covered" happened, you know, maybe even I'm not that old, but maybe we'll find out.
It was potentially 2004. There's a lot of reasons that it may have been for, you know, front yard setback accommodations with creating more inclusive communities in the front yards, hanging out on front porches. Ultimately, you know, there, it arguably creates more bulk.
Yeah.
If it's covered, and if it's uncovered.
Right. It seems counterintuitive. So let's have a hearing on it, and like I said, maybe it'll be back. So is there a motion to send this to the zoning commission?
So moved.
Second.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdonk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for the presentation. The last item on the agenda, when you come to us with your handout, you have to sift through the whole meeting. The last item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution for an emergency funding request for Family Services of Glencoe in the amount of $30,589 to assist with ongoing mental health assistance for the Glencoe community in response to the Highland Park shooting. I'll ask Christina Phillips, who's the Executive Director of Family Services of Glencoe, to present, and I would note that this was also presented at our Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday. Christina.
Although I have to say, it is definitely not a handout. We are working very hard for this emergency funding.
You know, sometimes, sometimes I go too far, and I apologize.
Just to clarify. So as Village President mentioned, I'm Christina Phillips. I've been the Executive Director since March 1 at FSG, and it has been a very busy, almost six months, as you can imagine. And I'm sorry, I'm a foot shorter than everyone else here, so. July 4th happened, and I know that it affected all of us in many different ways. I'm not sure how much you know about FSG and the services that we offer, but we offer mostly mental health services. We have some other services in there, including senior housing, senior case management, ongoing parent support groups, educator support groups, those types of things. But the bulk of the services on our menu of services that we offer are traditional mental health services. And we do have a contract with Public Safety, and we partner with them on a daily basis to provide crisis intervention and crisis response when they request so. So on the 4th of July, I was actually leaving my condo in the city on the way up here for the parade, when I'm sure everyone's phone went off about the mass attack in Highland Park. Within an hour, as soon as Emily Mizell, our Senior Program Manager, who was here earlier for the swearing-in, she was in Highland Park assisting on the ground. She works very closely with local public safety departments, not just Glencoe, but surrounding communities. She worked in the coming days after the attack, offering family reunification, working with the FBI for victim assistance, just really jumping in as a social worker to provide those wraparound supports that families and victims needed. We immediately shifted to offering free mental health services to anyone who was affected by the shooting. So this is a change of service for us. I wanted to remove any barriers to obtaining the help for trauma processing that community members, residents, and workforce alike would need to get the help that they deserved. We've been offering drop-in clinics, we've been offering workplace processing, we've worked with the public safety team, local businesses, other nonprofits, and we're continuing to offer traditional one-on-one therapy sessions. I just pulled data today, in the past seven weeks, we've offered therapeutic intervention to 100 individuals. And for FSG, we are a small agency, and we're a small team. 100 service offerings in the past six, seven weeks, that is huge for us. And I vowed since July 5th, I told my board, I told my staff, we need to jump in and offer the support needed, because so many could not raise their hands. And there's a good reason why. So many of our partners in Highland Park and nearby, they were so affected by their own trauma of being at the parade, that they could not properly serve and offer mental health services. So my request to you, and this is in conjunction with other requests to other donors and funders, I've been working very closely with my board, individual donors, foundations, we were recently just awarded a grant from Nutria Township. I've also submitted grants to the Highland Park Healthcare Foundation, the Highland Park Community Foundation, just came out with their guidelines this week, and we'll be submitting there. So this is just to leverage resources, and this money that I'm requesting would only serve Glencoe residents and workforce. We want to continue to offer free services for those affected by the July 4th shooting. Those would include drop-in clinics, we have some at Village Hall next week, we've had them at the Park District, Am Shalom, Central School, you name it, traditional psychotherapy, one-on-one therapy sessions, employer support groups, educator support groups, parent support groups. And the great thing is that we actually hired a new clinician on July 1, who is bilingual in Spanish, and also a childhood therapist expert. So unfortunately, you know, it's great that we have her on the team, but we're so fortunate that we have that expertise. Just, I was just communicating, as I was sitting there, and I had a phone call today at about 5:30 of a mom who was at the parade with her four-year-old daughter. And trauma and grief pops up when you're least expecting it. She's getting ready to go to pre-K. She's refusing to go. She's having night terrors. She can't eat, she can't sleep. And unfortunately, I'm getting the same story over and over, four-year-olds, 12-year-olds, 16-year-olds, 63-year-olds, you name it. So my request for $30,589, that would provide free mental health services to all Glencoe residents and workforce who are interested through the remainder of this calendar year ending on December 31st. And that would provide, as I mentioned, everything for Glencoe residents. I'm leveraging, you're not the only funder I've requested and have support from, I want to leverage all of our donors and funders to make sure that we can best support our community and provide that trauma processing that is so, so needed.
Thank you. John, do you want to, you know, since you've heard this, why don't you, you know?
Yeah, well, I'm certainly in support of it. And one other thing to mention, so as I briefly mentioned during our Finance Committee report, Village Finances are in great shape, and this is something that serves our community in a really needed way. So from a financial perspective, it's certainly justified. And so I think, you know, I don't think we need to worry about it from a financial perspective. I think the positives for the community are significant, and it's money well spent.
Dudley?
A quick question for the applicant. This is a bit unusual for us, but I was thinking we already were in unusual situation with COVID. Did COVID impact your operation as well?
It did. So my predecessor, Bill Hanson, was Executive Director at that time. It did impact services, they had to switch to virtual, of course. There was a portion of time where therapists were unable to meet in person with clients. But the response to the Highland Park tragedy, that's the first ever, and 108 years of existence of the organization. And so just to clarify, this is a one-time request, this is not an ongoing, this is something to get us through the remainder of this year, to make sure that I do not have to turn away Glencoe residents. Right now, I was looking at my staff calendars today for our therapist, and our brand-new therapist, who started on July 1, she is almost at capacity. She has 15 children she's seeing every week, 15 kids. And these are all brand-new clients that have never received services from FSG, and honestly, have never received any type of therapeutic services. So not only were these individuals at the parade, but sometimes this triggering a trauma will bring up other issues that people haven't addressed in the past. So yes, you know, COVID did affect our operations, but we've never been impacted like we were for the Highland Park response and jumping in to help our neighbors.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I think people, we talked about Tuesday, was, we would fully expect that there may be another ask coming.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, for...
And this was submitted, you know, just, this was submitted a week ago, and honestly, every day changes. I'm in a unique position this week because my clinical director is on vacation, so I'm jumping in, doing intake and some quasi-therapy that, you know, I need to go back to my undergrad and my original roots, not my grad school, to do that. The cases are upticking with the start of school. So I know that we typically do our traditional grant request for general operating, our ongoing partnership, but there will be an additional request.
I don't want to be stingy. I think it's good practice when they've asked for a number and we're comfortable with that. I just think it's good practice for us to say, "Okay."
I agree. I want to meet the request. And if there's a need for another, then let's talk.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know where to find us, you'll just have to wait to the end of the meeting.
Just walk downstairs, right?
Any other questions for Christina? If not, is there a motion to provide, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdonk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting and presenting and for what you do.
No, thank you, absolutely. No, thank you. The residents and the workforce of this... No, thank you. The residents and the workforce, this means a lot to our team, so thank you very much for your support.
That concludes the agenda for this evening. Is there anything anybody else wants to talk about while we're here? If not, there's no closed session. Is there a meeting to adjourn?
Yeah. To adjourn.
There's a second. Let's have, do we need a roll call? No. Voice vote, all in favor.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, everyone.